Let us throw in our hearts and our minds to give thanks to all my God for the blessings that he has given to us, the blessings of health, the blessings of family. We ask that he be with those who need his healing hands. We need the hope that he's with those who need his extra love. We ask that you walk with us in this world that we may be better witnesses to you. And as we meet here together, we do what is best for all, that we may share in your glory. All these things we ask in his name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, you see it. Joe, follow the rules.
Jerry.
Dordia.
Here.
Edwards, here.
Jacob Eadie.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
Earl.
Here.
Sidney.
Here.
We have said.
I received an email from this chair that she asked to be excused for illness. Is that always that way?
So moved.
Room by Mr. Dordia, second by Ms. King. All those in favor of executing this thing, five by saying aye.
Aye.
Also, as we need tonight, remind yourself, sit forward and speak into the mic. Judge Tom Moore sent that message to us last night. We'll follow.
And I can witness, like, and review tapes, and it is difficult when you're not speaking directly in the microphone.
Okay, with that, we move on to the minutes in the previous meeting, April 2nd. You have received those elect. Hi, thank you. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? Mr. Edwards.
President, under my roundtable discussion, on the first paragraph, I did not meet with the law director. Please break that. And on the third paragraph, I did understand that some things are subject to collective bargaining, but I just had to clarify the pages in the letter that I did support the point. That's all. And also, I think on just a big, the second reading, Resolution 29-18, that was a bold call, not a choice.
Oh, if you want to recognize it.
Yeah.
That is true.
So I.
Other corrections? Seeing none then, we will file the minutes as presented, corrected. All right, and move on then to, oops, what's that one? Administrative reports. Oh, communications. All right, Mr. Yer.
I have the items listed in the order of business tonight with no additions or dilations.
Mr. Director, we've received the first of the communications listed in the order of business.
Room by Mr. Jacob Eadie, that's second, Mr. Simone. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Communications are filed. Now we move to administrative report. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two items for counselor and I. First of all, under ordinance 32-18, which is a renewal of the incubator plan, I would advise counsel that Mr. John Myers is here tonight, if you have any questions to him about progress with that program, and as well to Dr. Director Vazola can help out with that as well. Second item, we've had a request from the Chair of the Downtown Special Events Commission to appoint Dave Thomas. Many of you probably know Dave Thomas. He was a former director of the Climax Center and also has done quite a bit of work around town in drug rehabilitation and with MRDT. So I put his name into counsel for confirmation, requested a positive motion on that at this time.
Is there a motion through that?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On that board that's 32-18, does the name change? The name change for 32?
It's been. It's changed a number of times.
And they're asking for a required revolving loan again?
Right.
Was there one in the previous one?
This is, this is the third time it's been out through the.
Okay, so maybe it was paid off?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. I just.
This is, this is a grant.
Okay.
And this has been the city's portion. We're in conjunction with the University of Mount Union. We were also in conjunction with Alliance Area Development. And for a while, the Lions Ventures was also involved in providing an office space for that.
Why the change then?
What, this is change dynamics. It used to be technology accelerator, technology incubator, and now it's more of an entrepreneurial business accelerator.
Okay.
And I defer Mr. Myers at such times, we consider that for further clarification.
Thanks for the update.
All right, another question. And is there a motion for the appointment of Mrs. Thomas? Simone. Room, second by Ms. King. All those in favor of the appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? All right, moving on, other questions for the mayor? Moving on, Mr. Drager, safety service.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is compliance tonight. One, we have made a habit of using uniform with the water and the disinfection byproduct testing as it's going on. If you do remember, the testing for the first quarter of the year, we were using the U.P. due to algae taste and odor problems, and that did make that, those numbers a little higher than what we'd seen in the same quarter the year before. Good news is that I'm, we're not certain that it's from all array. If this is one of the few good things about all array, then the numbers are much lower for the second quarter. In fact, so much lower than even what they have for the increase we saw in the first quarter. And if you remember that, it's a test that is a running year of the average, so that helps tremendously that it is a lower number. There is a program that's going on, the form in Alliance Coalition Counselor. For that is where there's some volunteer work that is done to properties where there's a person in need, generally it's somebody who physically needs a little bit of assistance to maintain the property. Biggest thing is it has to be an owner occupied property within the city limits. They will be coming up in June, but if you happen to know somebody that you think might be a current candidate over here, please let Michelle cover them. She's kind of the layman for us, for passing information off to those. The recycling quarter, numbers for the first quarter have come in very similar to what we saw for the last quarter of 2017, and then we are seeing about double what we had. Whether you're a big fan of recycling or not, it does a lot of good for us in terms of what we received in our grant from the solid waste of people on beautiful program. And the last thing I wanted to make you aware of is that the judge hasn't been good enough with his C.R.P. program to give Mr. Burman any assistance to an idea he had, and they are sweeping off the sidewalks on stage. And started that and doing a lot more. It's a little bit handwork, but it kind of helps get rid of all that salt and grit and accumulation and powder for the weather and whole three will give you a little bit of a squirt of some of that work that's going on right now. That's much of what's.
Question for the safety service director. And thank you, Mr. Drager. Moving on, law director, Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, sir. I'll go back to a month ago to Chief Dordia's question you had for me, and I'll explain why I stumbled on your, on your question. You asked me if I was planning to leave, and at the time you asked me that, I knew that one of my employees was interviewing. And so that's what really made me stumble about it. Matt Coon has accepted a full-time job in Summit County. His last day was last week, but I am lucky enough, I always seem to find someone who is perfect for the job at the time. And so I have hired Angel Rule. She's an Alliance native. She has five years' experience. She's been in this courtroom representing defendants, but it's always helpful to us when we are able to find someone with experience. Now, the reason I'm telling you all this is that those of you who have been here a while know that there's a little known section in the Alliance Codified Ordinance 13701 that says that all of my hires as assistant prosecutors are subject to counsel approval. So I am here tonight asking you to approve this rule as replacement for Mr. Coon. No change in salary, no, it's just hopefully it'll be a seamless transition. That's the first item.
Okay, is there a question to add? Mr. Dordia, question.
Well, I may, to go by what you just said, that I would make a motion to the meeting approval of the hiring of Angel Rule, position of assistant city prosecutor. If that request by the law director.
Okay, it has been moved. Second by Ms. Jacob Eadie, further discussion.
I have to say something. Do you need to know why?
Well, I don't, just don't think, according to the rules, you can stay, but if you have to go.
Grant, okay. I'd like to be asked if he is grant on voting on this person.
There are votes to do. Ms. Rader, room, Sumio, seconds, further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You are excused, sir. Now, we have further, our motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Jerry.
Thank you very much. I also understood that you had questions about a new lawsuit. We got served with a second lawsuit on April 6th, which was the Friday after council. I understood that you may have all had access to it before that, but we did not get served until 6th. If you would like to ask questions, I'll be happy to entertain them, but I must ask that we do so in executive session. I cannot discuss pending litigation outside executive session. So if you would like to request that now, later, the next meeting, however you want to do that, I'll be happy to discuss that with you.
What is the counsel?
Just to clarify, it's not that we have to discuss it in executive session, it's that we may discuss it in executive session.
Actually, my requirements as a lawyer require that I not discuss pending matters outside of my client's because that would break attorney-client privilege. And so if I discuss it with all of these people here, then I have broken attorney-client privilege, in my opinion.
If your clients are asking you to discuss it with them in an open meeting, how would that be a violation of attorney-client privilege?
Well, all of you would have to agree to that.
Isn't that why you vote?
Well, yeah. I mean, if you want to vote to do that, but please understand that would be against my advice because you would potentially be compromising the position of the city by discussing legal strategies in front of, I mean, the world. May I ask a minute?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like, might as well use this as my opportunity. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session after, after, after the standing committee reports for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and with counsel.
With, yeah.
You have to have with counsel.
I brought the remarks for my presentation.
Well, gonna finish then, I'll add that also, per your particular order. Well, the exception is discuss pending litigation with counsel. That's something you have to keep that together. Just trying to keep you in line as a member, not in part of the.
As you wish, Jerry. To discuss pending litigation with counsel and to discuss the fiscal watch plan presented by the mayor that he has not seemed fit to speak to publicly. And I would like that to include all members of counsel, administration, council president, council clerk, and of course, his counsel.
Okay, it's been moved to move into executive session at the end of standing committee report, for purpose, for, you want to read what we have in the minutes?
For the purpose of discussing pending litigation with counsel and to discussing mayor's fiscal recovery.
Is there a second? Point of order, yes.
I would suggest that we split those up into two separate motions and read directly from the 122 codes and make sure we are following all laws. Since it's for two different things, I would suggest that we separate those motions.
Oh, okay, I understand where you're going. Okay, I can tell. Is there a proposal?
I just look at the reasons we've been going to executive session. I don't know if the mayor plan is one of the ones laid out by 121.22G, collective bargaining matters, and if that's where you're going.
I have to see if it's still, if there's a reason there is a comment.
All right, hold on. How about, how about I just withdraw my motion? You guys help me out a lot with that.
Mr. Edwards?
I think if we, first one would be fine to talk about what puts counsel on that matter, that pending litigation. The other one, possibly, it would be since one of those items involves collective bargaining, that could be stated that way. It's one of the house of protection recovery.
And one motion, or?
In two.
In two motions because of that, what we're currently available. Okay, so, Mr. Dordia, the judiciary, where we need to, where we want to go. All right, we need a motion to manage to go into executive session after standing committee report for the purpose of appointing attorneys, discussion of legal matters.
Sensuality.
Pending litigation.
There's open motion, same court, yeah, okay.
Or if you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if that, would be that your motion, or do you not want to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Edwards, for a good discussion.
Mr. President, this is literally what we got to, where we have to read exactly from 121.22G.
It's a matter.
It can't be a summation of what we think the revised code says. We know Mr. Dordia, I'm not trying to be critical, but this is exactly how we got to. If somebody made a motion that they thought kind of surmised what that section says, and it didn't, it has to be what the section says. And I cannot believe that our honor attorney is silent on that.
Well, I gave Mr. Dordia the revised code directly right in front of him.
Yes, she did.
I'm trying to help, but.
Mr. Yer, you're going to say.
So, so, this is a fine example of how dysfunctional this whole document becomes. If I made a motion, we can go into executive session for conference with our attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that is subject to pending or imminent court action.
Okay, so, second to that motion. Mr. Edwards, second, further discussion. All those in favor, yes.
I just would like to include everybody that I mentioned previously in that, which is all members of the council, the administration.
Okay.
Council president, council clerk, and.
All right, and that's the second brief.
Yes.
All right, so, further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right.
We'll call them.
Oh, we'll call them. Go ahead.
Dordia.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jacob Eadie.
No.
King.
No.
Earl.
Yes.
Sidney.
Yes.
And it's 42, early. Yeah, 42.
All right, next, another motion then. It's a possibility that you see, and that's where.
Yes.
Okay, so your second motion would be then to have an executive session at the end of, or can we do it right after that?
Yeah.
Okay, right after standing committee reports for the purpose of discussing the mayor's recovery. Is that adequate?
Um.
Okay. I'm gonna stop.
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find the section for the law director to get.
I want a couple of every shoulder, why don't you ask me to?
I think, I think we're stretching every handle, so a couple of each shoulder.
Okay.
Well, I'm.
Okay, I, I didn't want to input myself, if I may. That's all, those are all the sections. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, four, eight. So if what you want to talk about isn't contained in one of those eight, then you can't go in. Well, I don't know what you want to talk about, but I'm gonna tell you what to, or tell you what you want to talk about. If you want to talk about negotiations and how it's going to affect negotiations, then, then that.
But don't, don't be, I mean, might as well discuss it now, because I'm sort of nervous, yes, to talk about the fiscal plan presented by the mayor.
Well, but that's, as I understand it, that proportion of it is covered by negotiations. I'm, I'm happy.
Well, I'm not comfortable.
Okay, now if you're not comfortable, then what you do?
All right, then you're not comfortable making a motion to go to that second committee session, what I hear?
If somebody else wants to lay a certain dimension, but I don't know. I'm assuming that really made sense to me for that particular verse.
Gobble, anything? Time to move on. We are into utility. Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Room, yes. Ask for, I have.
You skipped me, that's okay. I was good from here. I said a couple of items. No report in the packet, but counsel was given the statement of cash position last week along with the detailed trial balance. And the general fund has a deficit balance of $344,000 at the end of March. Some of that is timing because we had prepayables in March. We also get our property tax in April, so that'll help recover from that a bit. I would like to sometime set up a meeting maybe for mid-May to sit down and go through the numbers a little more detail, cover a lot of the codes, to see where we're at with everything. Lastly, income tax, tomorrow's the deadline to file. If you haven't filed by tomorrow, you can ask for an extension, but the date is here. So that's all I have.
Questions for the other? Seeing none, now we can move on to standing committee reports. Properties and men, Mr. Yer is here. Mr. Dordia, safety judiciary.
Thank you, sir. Tonight we have on the agenda 3318, which is interesting how it's written. It doesn't look like the city doesn't want to do this, well, it looks like the fire department does, but it's a safety grant. And I believe that the deadline for filing is April 27th, so actually you can take it today. And I don't, if you apply, you get a grant, you don't have to take it, but certainly you can accept it if you don't apply it at the time of passion, you know, in the grand. So the way it looks to me, this particular grant would be for hiring new, not retention, since I think we're, we fall into the career fire department category in that particular area. In the language of that grant, I'm not a lawyer, as obviously we all just saw it, but it seems to me that we should, we should pass this tonight and allow the firefighters or the safety service director, or whoever is going to be the final applicant to push this forward and see what our options then become. So the other thing is, I don't know if you guys saw it or not, but Friar Hill Foods was thorns, and they had a liquor license, they kept it in safekeeping. Safekeeping is a classification for a liquor license where it's basically a state, state listing in a vault for safekeeping. It still belongs to Friar Hill, but it's just there. And apparently, the Sanders brothers are seeking to take over, I'm sure with some kind of agreement with Friar Hill Foods, that particular liquor license. And I don't think that we have any requirements to throw on this tonight, but I just want you all to be aware that there's nothing at that property that I'm familiar with that would give us any standard to object to. And frankly, you know, I think we all want Sanders to be on at least a level footing with competitors in Alliance. It's been a long time that this has been empty and having, having a fully functional, successful school there is in all of our best interests. So I, this, it's not too much for here at the end, right? This is just an informational communication.
But you can say that you don't want to reflect together, you can certainly move for that tonight.
Well, then I'll move for that tonight. I'll move, the, 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 the,
going to be held here in Alliance, Tuesday, April 24th, 1:30 to 3 o'clock at the Hampton Inn Suites next to Wendy's. And you have to RSVP by April 20th. I don't know if you can go online and see this, or...
Sure.
It's online, so if anybody is interested for the 50th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, I myself, I seem to be very interested, but that's all that I have for tonight, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on then, the streets and alleys, Mr. Roe?
No report, sir.
Lanning, zoning and housing, Mr. Simeon?
No report, sir.
Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn into executive session.
At 7:25.
All right, we are adjourned into executive session. So, we'll have to meet in the house, all right.
There you go.
Okay, we are in open session, so at this point in time, public speaks.
And there is no one signed up for public...
All right, and we move on to the council member roundtable. This chair is not here. Mr. Dordia?
Well, first thing, let's say everybody out there, I apologize for all the inconvenience that we have. Mr. Dordia?
The air conditioner is handling your... Can you pull the speaker?
Yeah, we got to speak out.
Man.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dordia.
I was apologizing because it took so long, and I appreciate you guys hanging in there waiting for us to come back. You know, I've been an observer or a participant of city council since 1998. Almost every meeting in this room, a regular session. And I was well aware of the council and its membership for many, many years before that. And I, since the last meeting, I've tried to think about a council so divided. You know, I mean, we've had some individuals over the years that kind of polarized the place, I suppose. And I'm not trying to be a polarizing individual, but I've spent many years trying to do what's right, and so we've done what's popular. And obviously, I've tried to do a couple things on council floor that either the majority of council didn't agree with, or the mayor didn't agree with, or whatever, but I've changed the fact that those things were right. Last meeting, I was a little disappointed, but we all have an opportunity to say what we should say. In fact, that's why we have the roundtable on our agenda now, so that it's basically an uninterrupted opportunity to express a view of thought, concern. And I thought Julie was mistreated in the last meeting. You know, we've had a financial problem here for a long time. And you that've been here as long as I have, remember, I've probably every year expressed my concern by kicking the can down the road as we change the allotment of the income tax dollars almost annually to try to offset the operational costs. Maybe I should have been a little more direct, assertive, and not just complaining, but we aren't fixing anything, we're just going to be bottom down the road because here we are facing. And here we have, you know, a fiscal plan, but as yet, for me, it is very abstract. It's not clear at all. And tonight, I want to ask for passing two ordinance supporting the fire department's increasing personnel. And they don't know what the fiscal plan is going to do to that or anything else. You know, as we sit here and we're divided and we're dysfunctional and we're not getting things done, we aren't doing the service we were elected for. You know, when things break down, as might have been, they did last meeting, to a personal level, it's not something we care about. It's something that you shame, but we could all have our personal beliefs. You know, we could all like or dislike somebody, but we're up here to do the city business. We're not up here to make friends, we're not up here to throw darts at them, and we're here to do what we pray for, every wisdom, guidance, grace, compassion, understanding, and maybe cooperation, certain communication. So, I'm just telling you, as a lifetime resident, longtime employee, longtime elected official, this is the most disappointing I think I've ever been, ever been on the city government. And I'm ashamed to be a part of that. So, I don't know what anybody else wants to do. We got to fix this, because it's not going to fix itself in the city climate without leadership. And we definitely need some leadership about that. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on then to Mr. Edwards.
I just wanted also to give my back to ordinance 318. I think it's a good move to proceed in that direction, and it could possibly be affected by the recovery plan. Maybe it might help us. I don't know, but I think it's a good thing to move ahead with it. That's all I have.
All right, moving on. Mr. Jacomides?
After our last meeting, I had a rather long phone call with Mr. Gregor about the recovery plan and what I had hoped was that we're supposed to try and kind of close the gap of our differences, and I really appreciated his time and friendness. However, unfortunately, Mr. Gregor gave me the impression that I was going to receive something in my email between you and the mayor that would kind of better explain the recovery plan and work towards the questions that I had been asking. And we went by, and I didn't get anything. And I know you called me again, but frankly, you told me that I was going to have something in writing, and I never got something in writing, so I'll be honest with the rest of you, I did not return his call because I didn't get an email that was what was promised. So, I still don't have any further clarification. I don't know if that was an effort to try and placate me and make me feel like I was part of it so that I would vote for it, but it didn't work if that's what it was. I still don't have the answers that I want publicly. You know, I can hear things in a phone call, and I can make assumptions, but ultimately, we are a public body doing public business, and still there are answers that are in the public forums. I am not going to vote for a recovery plan that is so vague. I mean, between $200,000 and $400,000 that was saved for the fire department. And I listened to Mr. Gregor on the phone. I've had people ask me if that means that we're closing the fire station, one of the two, or if we're going to lay off firefighters, or if that means that we're going to start running EMS because that might generate revenue. And there's all kinds of wild speculation, and I don't know any of those teams in remotely act, right? That's the ones going to save us $200,000 or $400,000. But I also know that I don't have an answer for the people asking me those questions and asking me to clarify where the $200,000 or $100,000 is going to come from. So, until I can provide the answers, I'm still not going to vote for the recovery plan. And I really think it's offensive, Mr. Mayor, that you are trying to disregard council's job here. I mean, I understand that it's your plan, but part of your plan is to be able to ratify it. And I want to support the plan. I want the part of it passed, I want this to be a non-issue so we can move forward, but I have to do my job, and you're making it impossible for me to do my job. I just want a better explanation. I'm not asking you to give away all of the negotiating notes that comes and elements in the taking of the fire department negotiations. I'm not asking for too much, I don't think, other than something that we can give the public to swell some of the speculation that is so all over the place right now. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Ms. King?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Mr. Roe?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Simeon?
So, yes, thank you, sir. I wanted to thank Mr. Gregor, who took me out last Tuesday for about four or five hours. We went to... We started off at the street department, which John was here, everybody see he left, which I wanted to thank him. John spent about an hour with me, and it's pretty informative as well as educational. John literally spent like an hour, took me all around, you know, everything he does with the street department. One thing, though, that I thought was pretty good that he's doing is that, maybe everybody's not aware of this, but he has a machine that scans the signs. I'm using the word scan. So, he just buys the metal, the shape that he needs, and which saves a lot of money from what he's telling me. Like, they need a street sign. If you order one that specifically says Union Avenue, it's way more money than if you just... You can put the Union Avenue on yourself. So, I thought that was pretty good, and their efforts, it seems like it's saving quite a bit of money. Our second stop was the water waste treatment plant, which was probably by far my favorite of the day. We probably spent about an hour there. I know that's something he used to do, so he was very informative on taking me around. We went into like underground, on top of catwalks. I thought the whole thing was just fascinating. It gave me a whole new perspective on that you can literally turn on your water faucet if you have clean, safe drinking water. And I couldn't believe it was like, if you guys haven't been there, it's like its own little city. And that by far was my favorite part of the day with all the... Just the whole avenue, the way the thing works. Then we took a quick trip through the cemetery, and he was telling me about how there's some stuff that they're trying to work on, working on fixing up old tombstones. Maybe the families don't exist anymore, they don't have money. And then we visited the fire department. Then the last one, which was also very educational for me, was the police department. I had never been downstairs and seen the jail cells and everything. And on a funny note, Captain Jenkins I fell for probably the oldest trick in the book. He told me, "Go in and look at the toilet," which he didn't shut the door, I mean, when he cut, so that was kind of my highlight of the whole trip. So, I just want to thank you again, Mr. Gregor, for taking me out. That was very nice and educational that day. And on another note, on the recovery plan, I do have concerns, as Julie does, with the $200,000 to $400,000. Same thing, I've been asking questions, are we going to... Is there going to be layoffs, cuts, part-time even, of all, to your fire department? And I know, as long as I sit on this council, I will not vote for anything that in any way hurts the fire department or the police department. Two of the most, I think, the most valuable departments are safety services. I know if my house catches on fire, I want the fire department there, and I don't want to not know that I can be there because we don't have the manpower, you know, or whatever else takes. So, at this point, if we have other answers as well, I will not be voting in favor of the recovery plan tonight. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Moving on. Third reading, Mr. Euchard.
It takes us to resolution 2918, a resolution presented or introduced by council appoint to the resolution approving the mayor's financial fiscal recovery plan in accordance with section 118 of 25A, the higher vice governor, declaring emergency for the public safety and law.
Okay. Your motion? Mr. Roe?
Make your motion to make so, uh, resolution 2918.
Is there a second? One more time, is there a second? Motion dies for the lack of a second. All right. Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the administration, who can go around and around on this, you know, is what can be said that would not affect negotiations?
I would be more than happy to move to executive session, that was fine with me. That's okay, we can't, yeah, it's fine. I did run off something that you may want to look at. It's the management rights part of the section bargaining process. Those would be things we would attempt to regain. We can't be specific. We don't know how that's going to go. This thing will probably go to impasse, this thing goes to an arbitrator, the arbitrator will tell us. And I'd like to remind council, the council has the final vote on this. This is actually what council has and has authority to do. You vote up or down, either on the impasse, or you vote up or down on a contract. So, this is your obligation to do that. I would also add a couple other things, since I haven't had a chance to talk very often. We haven't been kicking the can down the road. The last five years, for 74 months, we've been negotiating with 13 U.S. trying to avoid fiscal caution, fiscal watch, whatever the category was. Had we not done some of those negotiations over the past 74 months, we would have been in fiscal costly emergencies somewhere around 2014, maybe we might have made it to 15. So, the administration has authorized through its legalities in doing it various things, and those have been approved by council through the bargaining with members and through this council. As we go about this thing, this dying for lack, I'll have to contact a state auditor who has approved this plan. I don't know what their reaction would be, since it's died 11/7.
If... Is it that what you have, that management thing? I had a lot of work for that, but is there...
It's not specific either, part. It's not specific.
Okay, I didn't know how specific it was. In other words, it says, "If we do this, we save this. If we do this, we save..."
No.
"You can't do that."
You can't do that. You don't have any clue.
You don't have some...
We estimated, you saw how right the estimates were, how far apart they are.
Yeah, but I mean, you had a specific thing that you might talk about in negotiations, and it was accepted all, you know, theoretically, this is how much it would save. That's... Is that against the bargain thing?
We can't get into things about bargaining prior to the bargaining and in preparation for bargaining. We cannot. This is a private entity, and we have to deal with it here. And we have to go to our representative, and we have to go to their designated representative. We can't do this in public session.
And we also can't talk about...
Take a second.
Well, I... You know...
My thought is, you should work with the law director, see, you can focus some language rather than have it stuck in front of you tonight and try and pump for a... for an executive session on this thing.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm not trying... I didn't call for an executive session. I was more than happy to talk about it in the executive session. I have given what I can give from a public session, and we're just going to sit here and, you know, I don't mind disagreeing with somebody. I'll agree to disagree with you, but this is a plan that is met with the satisfaction of a state auditor, and we'll go back to the state auditor instead that the council would not agree with. I'm fine with that.
Okay, then we're going to move on. Moving on to the second readings. Mr. Edwards?
There are no second readings.
New business?
New business takes us to ordinance 3218, introduced by Councilwoman King. That's an ordinance authorizing the city of Alliance to continue to partner in current tribute to the development of a business incubator directing Director of Public Safety and Service to authorize constitutions for emergency.
Ms. King?
I make a motion to suspend the three readings on ordinance 3218.
It has been moved to suspend the required three readings. There are seconds.
Seconds.
Ms. Jacomides, second. Further discussion. All those in favor of suspension of rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Ms. King?
I make a motion for adoption of ordinance 3218.
Moved by Ms. King, second by Ms. Jacomides to approve ordinance 3218. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It has passed. Moving on.
Takes us to 3318, introduced by Councilwoman Dordia. That's an ordinance authorizing the director of the Director of Public Safety and Service to apply for a federal emergency management agency staffing for adequate fire and emergency response for the purpose of funding and salary for firefighters of the Alliance Fire Department for a period of three years in the firing emergency.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Move for rule suspension on ordinance 3318.
Moved by Mr. Dordia, second by Mr. Edwards to suspend the rules. Further discussion, saying not. All those in favor of rule suspension, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The rules are suspended. Mr. Dordia?
Mr. President, move for adoption of 3318.
Moved by Mr. Dordia, second by Ms. King, to approve 3318. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. 3318 has passed. Old business. None. Okay, Ms. Ween is none. Motion to adjourn is in order. Ms. King moves. Is there a second? And Mr. Dordia, second. Have a good evening.